All right, we're gonna bring this meeting to order. At this time, we're gonna ask Commissioner Hollingsworth to give the invocation and the pledge.
Bow your head. Lord, thank you for this day, and thank you for all the things you've done for us. We stand here today and we pray for our soldiers overseas and our first responders and families that are still dealing with COVID. There's still many that are. And I want to ask you to help us as commissioners make the right decisions for the taxpayers. Sometimes it gets muddled and we have to really think about what's right, not what sounds good or feels good. And I just want to make sure we make the right decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any staff, y'all have any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Mr. Chair requesting to pull item number one from this meeting's agenda.
Item number one?
Under discussion and action items, yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm gonna also ask to pull item number three under county attorney discussion for tonight, and reason being, in the past meetings, we have strived for full transparency on the agenda, and this did not get out into the public till Tuesday night, and I don't think it's had a chance for the public to really have a chance to comment on it or view it. So I want to ask that we put this on the next agenda.
Mr. Chair, may I inquire as to the, I posted the memorandum to the agenda. I understand that there was some backup material that was added on Tuesday, but it's in conformity and compliance with the charter.
The full contract, to me, the contract that you're asking us to approve tonight
Yes, sir.
was not added to the agenda or to the backup material till Tuesday afternoon, best I can tell. It wasn't put out Friday like the rest of the agenda. And I don't think the public, and I've only had two days to look at it myself as far as today and yesterday, and I just think it would be the right thing to do at this time to move it to the next agenda. Do I need a second on that, or do I need a motion?
Does she have the authority to do that without a second? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Lucas, he can hear me, I say, any commission have the privilege to act an item to remove from the agenda or add it to the agenda. You don't need board approval to do so.
Any changes to the agenda must be board approved, yes, sir.
Yep. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to Commissioner Hollingsworth, proclamation number 2021 P-09.
I'm gonna read this proclamation. Columbia County, Florida, proclamation number 2021 P-09, a proclamation of the Columbia County Board of Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, honoring Sarah Wheeler for her selfless help to the community. Whereas Sarah Wheeler has been employed by the Columbia County Sheriff's Office since May 25, 2001, now serving as office supervisor over records, and whereas Sarah Wheeler is a citizen of Columbia County possessing a caring and compassionate heart for our county and community. And whereas for the last 10 years, Sarah has organized the annual Fins and Pins event, which raises funds for the Florida Sheriff's Boys Ranch. Sarah raises funds at Christmas for the children at the ranch and helps place children with families at Christmas. When families in need reach out to the sheriff's office, the go-to person is Sarah, who organizes fundraises to help these families no matter their need. Each year, Sarah organizes Thanksgiving food baskets for needy families and helps raise funds to support breast cancer awareness. Sarah's most recent fundraiser was in support of a Lake City police officer, generating around $25,000 in donations. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners on behalf of Columbia County, that is acknowledged, that it is acknowledged with sincere appreciation and deepest gratitude and outstanding service and work Sarah Wheeler has selflessly provided to Columbia County and our community through her tireless and dedicated service to those in need. In witness thereof, I have thereto set my hand and cause the seal of Columbia County, Florida to be affixed the 17th day of June 2021, Rocky Ford Chairman and James Swisher Clerk of Court. And I want to make a motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
At this time, Commissioner, would you present the award?
Okay, Mr. Canelio. Do you have a slideshow that you want, or do you have a presentation?
There's slides.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks very much for giving me a chance to, this is on, right? The Center for Sustainable Agricultural Forestry, known as COSAP, is like to show you these slides and offer the possibility of collaboration to improve agricultural productivity in Columbia County. I'm very proud to be up here after spending a lot of time at the University of Florida in Gainesville, 25-plus years. So our presentation is just to talk about dedicated energy crops, because IFIS and the UFL has worked real hard on perennial grasses and legumes, and we're bringing those, some of those to the county at our nurseries. We've, I think, provided papers on the subject of Wood to Energy Economic Impacts by Alan Hodges and Mohammed Romani, friends of mine at the university. Both of them are retired, but, and this work is ongoing. The Division of Forestry up in Tallahassee has continued the study of wood to energy and found, following my study that I did for Gainesville Regional Utilities in 2002, they found that there was enough waste wood, which is what we're talking about here, basically, to run, to build, to run another 5, 100-megawatt biomass power plants. That's the third, the third spot down there. The last one is that Gainesville's experience could be used as a model to proceed, or you, the Commissioners, could create your own model. Basically, I'm just introducing this topic seriously for the first time. The topic of wood, of waste wood to energy. Gainesville owns the power plant down there in Gainesville right now, and it runs 50% to 70% capacity. And we, I'm here because of the fact that wood ash from the power plant in Gainesville is contracted to the people I'm involved with, and we give it to ranches and farms. We spread it for people like Wayne Mosley, Terry Dix. We've been spreading his ranch recently. We give it to them, and it's an organic fertilizer. So, and we save the city of Gainesville hundreds of thousands of dollars from having the landfill. So the simple fact that we started building a biomass power plant 25 years ago could, in fact, be justification for considering another one. And that's where I think, you know, everybody should be all ears. We are a for-profit, but I was a not-for-profit back in 89, and this is just a brief blurb. I was in the Peace Corps. I had two degrees from UF, and my mentors at UF were several, but three of them are mentioned there. My dad was a Marine Corps artillery officer in World War II, and I live with John Rankin up here in his house, and Dennis Fisher, who's our mechanic, we're the principals of this little company. And we've been successful in bringing new ideas, I think, to Columbia County. If you have any questions, just interrupt me, I'd be happy to answer. The next slide is, what are we, what's our justification for this project? We'd like to see the improvement of economic viability of Columbia County's agriculture. There are problems here, and Mace Bauer, did Mace make it? Mace Bauer is gonna come here and talk, but he's told me, he works for Kelly Filman. Peanut yields are going down, and they don't know why. Wayne Mosley is having trouble with peanut yields. There could be, you know, there could be real reasons and ways to address that, and I'm sure there are. But we also have just a few big crops in Columbia County. And corn, obviously, and peanuts are the big ones, and timber and pine. Cattle, of course, is extremely important, and there are more, it seems to be more and more cattle, land cleared for cattle all the time here in Columbia County. I ride around on my bike and I see new ranches going in, which is good. But conservative American values, the last point there, thrive when new crops make agriculture exciting and profitable. And I think that that's what my little company is trying to do here, bring a few new crops to Columbia County. We want to diversify the county's crop production. We'd like to establish some new crops and new cropping systems that I learned about at UF, thanks to the land grant school down there. And therefore, we've been able to import new forage crops from the university, especially the agronomy department. I was there in the 70s in school, and there's a wonderful grass that has escaped notice because it's so hard to establish. It's called dwarf Mott elephant grass. I have a, we have a nursery on 18, and that's a picture of it, not a very good picture, I'm sorry, but it's a perennial, and it's, it likes sandy soils. It thrives extremely well in our heat and humidity. And this is what we'd like to highlight at a field day, that we'd like to, we'd like to ask you to get involved in, help us sponsor at the end of the year. But dwarf Mott elephant grass is a superior grass, which unfortunately, you can't plant it from seed. It's planted like sugar cane. So we like, at the field day, we'd like to, you know, raffle off bundles of the seed, which would be planted in the fall or in the winter, in the cool season, to members of the public that would like to come. We also grow an energy grass, the same genus as the Mott, and that's a picture of it there here in Lake City, just down, just down on the west side of town, Burt Avenue. That is an energy grass which is also perennial and could also help GRU get slightly away from harvesting from waste wood, which they're not running out of, but you'll see in a second how much is used down there. That crop right there is a perennial. It grows tremendously without irrigation every year. We want to harvest that using that machine at the end of this year and do a demo down on our nursery where we have it growing on Highway 18. It harvests five to 10 acres per hour, will pull in 75 to 150 tons of even fresh material. We'd like you to think about this because there is a possibility of employment for our young city residents, and I'm including, you know, Lake City and Gainesville in that, small cities. To plant elephant grass takes hand labor. And as a former teacher, I've been very successful in getting people to work when I had the not-for-profit, to plant various things in the past. And this would be a great job and education for young people on the winter, Christmas vacations, when we could plant a lot of this. And here's another picture of the big monster Kloss German-made Jim and Company head. GRU consumes 2,000 tons of waste wood a day. That's a heck of a lot. And that's not even to run the 100-megawatt biomass power plant. They have 100 megawatts down there. So that, I'm sorry, it does take 2,000 tons a day to run the 100 megawatts. Your capacity of this machine would, it means that it would take 13 to 26 days of harvest time using one machine to pull in that much of the energy grass. And Mace Bauer and Kelly Filman of 83 Farms, I think that's the name of their operation, own this machine. They're interested in a new crop. They're also interested in letting, bringing it down for a test harvest of our material. So the idea being to let it dry down after the frost, after the several frosts that we had this year, this is what it looked like. In the background is the energy grass, and the foreground is the forage grass. Both of them got browned. Both of them got frosted. It dries the energy grass down, and it would allow us to harvest basically dry and cropped, and hauling it as green energy to the power plant, if we were, if we got that far. Believe it or not, in the foreground, you've got this forage that was, that was browned, and yet the protein remained high, it's 7%. We've been running tests on the, on the protein in the forage, and even after it's frosted, that dried leaf was 7% protein, which could have been harvested, it could be harvested at that point, and probably blended with feed and taken to dairies or fed to animals. It's extremely tough grass. The company also owns a patented white flower cultivar of the ornamental perennial peanut, and I want to offer the county to plant one of your harder-to-mow sites with maybe 100 plugs and a median somewhere in the middle of town, and watch it, you know, watch it grow over time. It's, perennial peanut is really pretty, and that's the only white cultivar in the whole world that we had a mutation of in Gainesville. So what we're suggesting to the Commission, we'd like you to think about talking to Gainesville Regional Utilities as we've started, because I know people down there who might want to consider co-firing this energy grass with their wood. Remember, 2,000 tons a day is what they use of wood, of waste wood chips. So a 1% mix was, would be very doable, and we'd like, we have a site outside of town to grow 60 acres of it. If GRU was to get excited, and we can continue talking to them, maybe the Commission would like to go down and have a tour of the power plant. That would be something you could do in the fall or in the winter when it's cool. See this place. It's really cool. It's really cool. It's the biggest biomass power plant in the country. And now with Joe Biden in Washington, there's a good chance that they might start listening to us, because we do have hurricanes that come through, and waste wood will never be a problem in the state of Florida, especially North Florida. So maybe the farmers could get involved in growing 1%, 2%, 3% of the requirements for any power plant that's in existence or any future power plant. I'd like to ask the city commission to, the county commission to consider, you know, getting involved in this process. This is our sign on Highway 18, just west of 441 of the dwarf Mott elephant grass. We would like to talk to ranchers especially about that at the field day, and let them walk up and down and see this crop, have seed for them to purchase as well. I'm just requesting the possible involvement of a project with this new administration, which is interested in renewable energy. Let's get them to put their money where their mouth is maybe, and support a field day, support a demo in Columbia County, which could supply, as I said, part, a very small part of the needs down at the biomass power plant for GRU. We have 60 acres available from Wayne Mosley, who's still going strong with peanuts and corn. So that's my presentation, Commissioners. If there are any questions, I have a couple of handouts. For everyone up here on the lot, one for each, if you'd like to keep it up there. The forage grass that IFIS and agronomy is particularly, should be particularly proud of.
Let me ask you something. The Burt Road, is that your, like, test area? Because I went in there, and I remember this now, and now I really want to apologize for not going back and talking to you about this.
No, we tried to get together.
And then when you came, I said, oh, there is, you know. So you're the same guy that I talked to.
We still have your sign, Commissioner Hollingsworth.
Okay. But that stuff was amazing. You can't see through it. Like, it's thick.
I think, were you the one that suggested we ought to sell it as a private, as a privacy hedge?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. You can't, you can't run through it, I don't think.
It gets, it gets big, right. No, the Burt Nursery is where we have most, well, where we have all of our collection of grasses and legumes. And anybody's interested in coming by, we've got a little sign right on the road.
It's right on Burt Road before you get to the railroad track. It's a pretty neat thing. It's a neat place.
We don't have any animals there, though, but we're down on 18. There's gonna be a project for the field day if we get that far. There's gonna be an animal project right there next to the nursery. Dennis Kason lives right there on 18. He's putting, we already planted for him, and he's putting that, he's gonna put animals out there, and we can probably talk, he'll probably want to talk. I think it's good to communicate more about new ideas and new crops for people, even small folks who, you know, small producers. I have legumes, you know. Perennial peanut could be used by chicken, chicken producers, by backyard chicken producers, if there are many of them in the city. But we'd like to make available, you know, planting material to Columbia County residents and farmers, ranchers, even homeowners, privacy hedges, perennial peanut ornamental. We're in the spirit of contributing, cooperating, and improving the agricultural base of a county like Columbia County, where I, by the way, taught my first year as a teacher, I taught up here. That was way back.
So has, has anyone approached GRU about the market for this? Is this, do we know they want this stuff?
They, the very first report of, that I did for GRU back in 2002, Ed Ragan, who was the Mr. Science for GRU, he was the, he was the technology director of GRU. He asked me to put into the report on wood, a separate report on dedicated energy crops. So, yeah, they've had, this has always been known, short rotation energy plant crops is a subject of the research that, if you got into it, you would see this mentioned a lot. And it's the reason UF has continued working on these grasses. They know that it's coming, or it should come, you know, and they want to be ready. Scientists want to be ready for what society requests and needs, and that's what they do pretty well down there.
So is the, so is GRU saying that if this product was available, we would consume it?
They're not saying that. We've, we started to talk to the procurement officer of the wood, his name is Richard Schroeder. He's a good, he's a friend of mine. He understands what we're doing, and he's not saying, he's not saying, I oppose this, Tom. And I don't think he would say that to anybody that, like David's, I think, tried to call him. They want to know how far we're able to get, because it's, biomass is biomass. Cellulose is cellulose. If we can grow a cellulose crop up here, it's a perennial, 100 times faster than pine, and have farms receive the $30 to $40 a ton that they're paying for the waste wood, and you don't have to plant it, they will buy it. I'm, the COO of GRU sat down with me 10 years ago or less, and took the idea that we brought to them about, let's get the waste, let's get the wood ash to farms. They went along 100% with that idea. It wasn't just me, it was others who worked on GRU, and they're, they listen. They're like you, they're good listeners.
Tom, have you approached Department of Agriculture or NRCS about any funding available for?
Yes, sir, I have.
Experimental produce crops or anything like?
It's, it's, my time is limited. Today, I called the Energy Office in Tallahassee. There's such a thing as the Florida Energy Office. And I'm gonna follow up with the phone call just to send them the, send them the slides. They don't know what is going on here in a little tiny nursery. And UF, they want to research. They aren't, you know, commercializing anything yet. That's not their job. Your extension people could jump in and really help us. And Pauline Thomason has visited us twice to look at the forages. But they have no understanding. But they have no understanding of these energy crops, very few people do. This is the problem. I would very much like to go over to the city of Tallahassee that owns its own utility, like Gainesville own, you know, owns its own utility. This is exactly how we got Gainesville to build. We went to them and said, do you know how much waste wood is up here? Hurricane Matthew dropped 40 million tons of wood on the ground. None of it, I don't think, was really used. So I'd like to go to Tallahassee, maybe with your permission. I go over to the city of Jacksonville, they own their own utility. You could become the hub for production of energy crops right here for those two city-owned utilities. And this is, that's my dream, you know, because if Gainesville did it, it could be, it can be done again.
So so what are you asking this for this 20, I guess you're asking $20,000 from the board, is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm going to.
If you are, what is your intention to use that money?
I'd like to get some help for our field day. We have to rent that machine to demo the way it works, and I know it'll work just great. But they want, they want a chunk of money for one day for that machine, because it's so big and so hard to move. And I don't mind mentioning what they want for it to you if you want to know. But we'd like to feed people who could come and watch. And then I think that there's income to be made for my company if if the dwarf mod elephant grass can be sold.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, a request could be considered during our upcoming 2021, 22 budget. But we need to know the interest of farmers, of landowners, of timber companies within the area to proceed forward. We can put on a demonstration, if nobody's there, what what good does it do? But, you know, I think there should be a, a, a mechanism in place where you are responsible for generating this interest to get people willing to come to a demonstration to, to, to see how all this works instead of this board, because you're the one that's going to profit from it from the end. This board can help by saying that we support the idea, but the initial legwork should be left up to you to do so, you and your group to do so.
And I accept that that challenge, Commissioner Williams. We're going to do as much as we can to advertise. But the cost of renting that machine, maybe somebody, one of you could talk to Kelly Filman about making a donation. He's one of your wealthier farm, farm producers in this, in this county. But folks have to see to believe, and that would be the highlight of the day if we could demo that machine.
Here again, Mr. Chairman, I think he need to demonstrate to us that there's the interest, and people will attend the demonstration before we put $20,000 in it. And we're going to address the $20,000 during our budget coming up.
And Commissioner, I agree, we, we need to make sure that we can, we need to explore to see if we even have a category we can spend that money on something like that. I don't know that that's an allowable expense. We'll have to do some research on that. But that's definitely something we'll take into consideration, Tom, and look at it.
Thank you. That's, that's the most I we can, we can ask, because we're new here. We've only been here two years and the farms that have been receiving our assistance from, with the wood ash, if you want to hear from them, we can get letters. I have a letter from Mace Bauer right here supporting this idea.
And I think we all agree that you're doing a great service to the farmers by providing them the wood ash. I guess we just need to do some research, make sure this is a, is something we can just allow for us to spend money on. We have to have categorized stuff that we have to be accountable for the money.
Sure. If an invitation were to come to you from GRU for the end of the year for a tour of the biomass power plant, would, would the commissioners like to do that, run down there and and see the biomass power plant, talk to, probably talk to the COO about, you know, some of the questions that you, that you might, that you're asking me that I can't answer?
I think our interest in the biomass power plant would be if if this plant comes to fruition, and we have farmers in our community willing to grow this crop and this, and able to grow it and able to sell it, I mean, there's a lot of questions to be answered. That'd be our interest in the biomass plant, but, but I think we might be, we might be a long way from that step. I think we got to establish, number one, that there's interest in our farming community to take this on. And then, number two, that it can be done, and number three, that it can be sold. So, and I have no problem supporting an economic development project that benefits farmers in the area if it can be profitable to them, and it's something they want to do. But I think there's a lot of questions yet to be answered.
Well, the, who, you know, who's leading the, the, is the cart leading the horse or the horse leading the cart? You're the, you're the horses. I would seriously ask you to consider showing interest in, by going down there for a tour. You know, and that can be arranged. That's not going to cost you a dime of the biomass power plant. Then you'll get their attention. If they know that commissioners from an agriculturally important county want to see their biomass power plant. I don't think that's, I don't think too many counties have expressed that kind of interest. And it takes somebody like me and a small company like mine to come to a county commission, and I'm willing to go to Tallahassee, I'm willing to go to Leon County, Duval County, where I talk, and say, go over and talk to these people. Because this is, this is the coming thing, solar, solar and renewable energy. We don't know how far it's, it's going to go. And if you showed interest, and you went down there, nice, cool day in the winter, they'll, they'll give you the tour. And I think it's important for leaders to pay attention to that kind of thing. They spent $750 million to buy that power plant after it was built for half of that or less than half of it. So.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think this is the third time that Tom had been before the board. And here again, we could sit here and talk for the next three hours, but until there is a mechanism put in place where the interest is generated, and I don't have any problem with making a tour to Gainesville, but still, we got to have the generation interest of the farmers and those ones that I named before for this to take shape and and go with it. So, you know, I understand what he's acting, but we shouldn't be the one to catch his hand and lead him to where he want to go. I think he's the one that should prove to us that there's valid interest in Columbia County to these entities that provide the type of service that he wants to provide.
Commissioner Williams.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to move on with this one.
Okay. Oh, Tom, you got anything else to add, or that's it? We'll definitely take consideration, and and I, for one, have no problem taking a tour of the biomass plant, and I'm sure other commissioners.
But agriculture, they built this community, agriculture built Lake City. So you get enough farmers talking to us about this, you'll get what, you'll get some help. I mean, you know, I think if it's going to make them money, and they're going to be able to make money that they've never made before, it'll be a big deal.
I hope they can, I hope they can, I hope they can come and talk to you.
Not, not to drag this home, but just one more question. What's the extensions, the extension office involving this? Are they, are they willing to take this on, or?
I have no idea. I had a disagreement with your extension director the other day on the phone. She wanted to tell me that one of these plants is invasive, and I threw it back in her face. IFIS has phobias about some of these things that they're, that they're, they think that there should be worries about. There are not. What should I do with this?
Leave it on the podium?
Just leave it on the podium. Thank you.
I'd love to work, I'd love to work with IFIS. Paullette Thomason is a, is a rational extension agent, so is Caputo Jay. But I don't get along with your CED. I'm sorry.
Okay, Tom, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, Brandon, we'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, commissioners. The first item I have for you is SD 0193. It's a preliminary plat approval for Oakhamic subdivision. It's a request by Nat Columbus and North Florida Professional Services on behalf of Swanee, Swanee Holdings LLC. This parcel is off Western Road, just before you get to Bun Avenue. This is in District Five, Commissioner Murphy's district. The Planning and Zoning Board held a public hearing on May 27, 2021, and voted to recommend approval to the Board of County Commission. This is a small six lot, five lots, excuse me, subdivision, five acres, tracks, plus or minus, and really not much to it, other than, all the roads are already there. They are giving us some additional right of way on Western Road to widen that to a truly 60-foot right of way in that area. But if there's any questions, I'm here. There's also, I believe Nat Columbus is in the audience, and so is the property owner.
Make sure she read it. We're going to open the public hearing at this time. Anybody have any comments on this? Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing.
Chair, this, as Brandon stated, lies on the, in the middle of my district, and I have no reservation about it, and I'll make a motion to accept SD 0193.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Hollingworth, all in favor? All right. Okay, Brandon, continue.
Yes, sir. The second item I have is a rezoning, this is a rezoning Z 0596, ordinance 2021-07. It's for the North Florida Megan Industrial Park. It's a request by Richard Derabee of Moore Bass Consulting, agent for Weyerhauser in our company as the owner, to amend the preliminary development plan for the mixed-use development intermodal park. The, there are some minor changes that are insignificant, but the real bulk of the change is the preliminary development plan will change to allow, instead of maximum 300, they'll allow 1,200 dwelling units within the park. As the commissioner may recall, we did, specifically did a text amendment to the comp plan for this to allow this be, be able to be applied for. So this is just the final step in all this stuff we've been working the past year towards. And this is in District Four, Commissioner Witt's district, and the Planning and Zoning Board held a public hearing on May 27, 2021, and voted to recommend approval. There was no public comment at the hearing.
Mr. Witt, you got anything to add to that?
Open the public hearing.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing at this time. Not seeing anyone, we're going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, this being in my district, I make a motion to approve order number 2021-07-Z 0596.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion to approve consent agenda, and a second, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt consent agenda, all in favor?
Okay. Mr. Foreman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, tonight we have a motion to appoint Kim, or excuse me, a request to appoint Kim Skinner to replace Davy Parrish on the 2021 redistricting committee. Mr. Parrish was initially appointed, but it was later discovered he lives in Swanee County. Talked to Commissioner Witt about it, and he has recommended Ms. Skinner. So we're looking for a motion to appoint her.
I make a motion to appoint Kim Skinner to the redistricting committee. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kirby.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Foreman.
Yes, sir.
Under this down local agreement that we just adopted, the, you know, you might, might turn wall, then we said that we'll address that, that once they come up with what the improvement repairs have to be done and estimated cost on them, they're going to provide that with us as part of this down local agreement.
Are you talking about item number one that was pulled? Yes, sir. On the staff side, I think Mr. Kirby and Water Management District staff still have to get together on numbers. Tonight's discussion was primarily going to focus on the structure of the agreement and what was being proposed. But again, after talking to Commissioner Witt, we'd like a little more time to ruminate on it before we get board input. We're covering all those issues, though, yes, sir.
Toby, will this close this chapter of?
Well, when we do bring it up and discuss it in a future meeting, we will address that. It will, it will go a long way to closing the chapter. The, the problem is that Mr. Hill, this obviously affects his case against water management, and it deals with his family farm. Hasn't felt like he's had enough time to review it. And before this board gets into speaking about it openly and having a sense of comment, I just thought it best that we allow Mr. Hill time to review it. I've talked to him at length about it, and we continue to do so. But, but before, before we come on record, speaking of it, I would like to, to hear his input on it and for him to have adequate time to review it. So that's the only reason it's been pulled, is to give Mr. Hill time to, time to look at it.
Okay.
Mr. Kirby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I have four items for your consideration this evening. The first item is the residential commercial.
Redition committee.
The first item for consideration is a residential, commercial, and industrial solid waste services, bid number 2021E. As requested by this board, we went with two options for this contract. First, option one, residential solid waste, commercial solid waste, industrial solid waste, permanent roll-off containers, construction and demolition waste, temporary roll-off containers. Option two, residential solid waste and commercial solid waste only. We received three bids. Option one, Waste Pro 2.396, GFL Solid Waste Southeast 3.404, FCC Environmental Services 4.197. Option two, Waste Pro at 2.422, GFL at 3.2, FCC Environmental at 4.197. So before we go any further, obviously Waste Pro was successful at the first cut, option one or option two? What is option one versus option two? Residential units, you've got 22, 236 on both categories. Option one is 898 versus 908 at cost per month at one-week collection without carts. That equates to 199, 679 per month on option one, or 201, 902 for option two. So in totality, 2,396,151,36, or 2.422, 834,56. So in a first glance, option two is $26,683 and 20 cent heavier to the taxpayers. Now, it's important to remember, your private customers, your private roll-off companies are currently not participating in the 12% franchise revenues, okay? I randomly selected three of those customers. I am positive, if this board decides to go with option two, though it's $26,683 heavier on the tax roll today, once those companies participate, as does the current provider, that number will supersede that number. Any questions so far? Before I read this motion, Mr. Chairman, I do have a typo. I'm going to take industrial. I'm going to take industrial solid waste services out, but as a result of what I presented in the recommended motion as approved, bid number twenty twenty one E, residential, commercial, bid award to Waste Pro of Florida, option two without carts, in the amount of two million, four hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-four, fifty-six annually.
Mr. Chairman, I so moved we adopt Mr. Kirby's recommendation on option two and a comment afterward.
Second. Got a motion and a second?
The, Kirby, the, the, we're talking about a ten cent difference in option one and option two, but under option two, there's not a exclusive on roll-off.
In a nutshell, Commissioner Williams, that's exactly right. As we've talked about for years, we were always told that if we did not have an exclusive on the roll-off containers, that the taxpayer would be burdened significantly with additional costs. These bids do not indicate that.
So we're talking about a ten cent difference between option one and option two, but the caveat would be that we opening up container services should drive the price down on what people are paying for roll-off.
I think anytime you have a competitive bid process in anything in private business or public business, I think you would always get that situation. And the caveat, though it appears to be a loss for us, I randomly selected three customers and it come up to thirty-three thousand dollars annually, and I just went on the tipage.
And under option two, we still, we'll be able to have a windfall of the three hundred thousand dollars per year.
I'm sorry?
With containers, on the container services. What would our windfall be? By privatizing it based on not privatizing it on the option one?
Oh, you are correct. If, if we went, I think we're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Option two, in a nutshell, allows your private companies to be competitive in the permanent roll-off container business. As a result of that never being a possibility, they never fell under the franchise fee system, which is roughly twelve percent. Now, County Attorney Foreman and I have had a very lengthy discussion. Assuming this board goes with this proposed motion, our next step is to hold a mandatory meeting with all of our franchise holders. We're going to basically revise what is currently a franchise agreement here in Columbia County to reflect all of this.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I, I got my question. I made, I made sure I understood that we are not going to be losing, although we're going up ten cent for a household from one to two, but in the long run, he'll drive costs down for container services.
And, and the only thing I am, I was concerned with on this is the enforcement action of trying to enforce this, and I've discussed this with our attorney and, Joe, if you would, could you, could you speak on that, how we, your ideas on how we can enforce this?
Yes, sir. So the Department of Environmental Protection is kind of what I was looking to, and if, if you hold a permit for a utility with D E P and you violate that permit, the department can bring something called an enforcement action. And what I'm proposing is if a franchisee violates the franchise agreement and evidence is presented demonstrating, that sufficient evidence is demonstrated presenting that, then there would be a judicial enforcement action filed by the county in the name of the Board of County Commissioners against the franchisee, and then the judge would decide whether to suspend that franchise for a period of time or revoke that franchise for a period of time. I think the, the key issue that we've run into historically is we don't have the manpower to police this, and because there's no real threat of suspension or revocation, there's no, and, and because the market has been closed, there hasn't really been a motivation to self-police by the other carriers. If the other carriers are playing by the rules and they see one who's not playing by the rules, it's in their best business interest to report to the county that violation. And then instead of staff deciding or landfill deciding or the board deciding, was that in fact a violation that rises to the level of, of consequences, you let a judge decide that. Now, this would require some reformation of your ordinances relative to flow control, and that is the ultimate objective, is to make sure trash generated in the county is going to our landfill and not somewhere else. That's your legal justification for it. But I do think, and, and Mr. Kirby's correct and Commissioner Ford's correct, we spent a lot of time working on this and thinking about this, and, and I just feel like that's probably your best path forward to having something with some teeth in it.
So every time you get to talking about going to court and judges and COVID and all that other mess, it, it reminds me of code enforcement.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so with this new citation system that we have.
Yes, sir.
Can we collectively not, I hate workshop too, but can we, we, we can come up with something on our own, in my opinion, to make the enforcement quite simple? Because just like you said, all these people that are in the container business, you're right, it, it, it gives them encouragement to go forth, but you got to be about blind and stupid to figure out that we got a franchise hanging that ain't dumped first piece of trash in Columbia County yet.
Yes, sir.
You know, and, and the D E P thing, not to cut you off, Joe, but the D E P thing, it's, that, you know, that, that's, that's your meat in the game. So simply enough, you know, on the building construction side, I, I know we got a solution for that, but bringing one to Tim Murphy's house, you know, or Rocky Ford or something like that, yeah, I, I realize that's, that's a tough, that's a tough deal there, but that's just my input, because government slows the wheel way down, and we'll be having a discussion about that later on in this meeting.
And, and, and you're, you're right. And, and so that's kind of the idea, instead of handling it through the legislative body or through the administrative body of the county, you take it straight to court. Right? So there's enough evidence of, somebody's got a video of A B C Container Corporation with a full roll-off crossing the county line on ninety, going from Columbia County to Swanee County. That's, that's, that's a violation.
Yeah, but here in code enforcement, you got live pictures taking place, but it can't come from a third party.
Which is, which is my point, Commissioner Murphy. Instead of going through the code enforcement process, which can take a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty days, you go ahead and file your lawsuit. Everybody's on notice, they have an opportunity to respond, you've got a twenty-day summons window, you go ahead and get a hearing set. We can write your ordinance to provide for expedited processing, but it creates a lot more consequence than, you know, the county might slap me on the wrist. Now, the other thing is court costs, taxable costs and things like that. You've got a lot more mojo with a court order and a court judgment than you do with a code enforcement. So it's, it's an idea, you're right about workshopping, this is something that has to be worked on long-term, but again, while we're, for lack, I guess we call it the reset button. While we're looking at the reset button, we want to kind of look at this thing stem to stern and make sure we fix and tighten everything.
Well, what Mr. Kirby said, that's a perfect point. We're bringing all the vendors into play and you can get their input, you know, because it's just as much of interest to their party as it is ours.
Mr. Chairman, I think most of them play by the rules, though. I mean, I think you've got a few bad apples, most of them are playing by the rules, and I've always had a problem with the way this contract is working in Columbia County in regards to it allows government to tell a business who they can and can't use for, for this service, and I've always had a problem with that. So I think this solves that issue finally. The, the fear of it's going to drive costs up, it's not there, ten cent a household is a bargain to open up free market and, and encourage free market principles, so I'm in favor of it.
And I think to your point, Commissioner Witt, what that's, it's the consumer choice that's being opened up. There is still obviously some government regulation because of our flow control ordinance and the things we have to do to maintain and keep our landfill operational clean, but that doesn't mean the consumer doesn't have a choice. Anybody who's got a franchise in the market, consumer can pick whoever they want.
We have one comment card on this. Mr. Looker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Somebody, somebody left their glasses up here. I have a question. If you could get to the slide with the fees, the residential fees? I thought I had a PowerPoint for this, but I don't. That's eight ninety-eight a month. I'm only concerned about the residential, you guys can do your container stuff. That doesn't include any sort of recycling? I could see, is there any time you folks plan to consider offering recycling for an extra fee? I mean, I'm sure that Waste Pro could do it, if they used to do it, Waste Pro just shook their head yes. I mean, we're a little bit behind in that. A lot of people do recycling, planet like needs recycling, if you look at all the plastic that washes up on the shores. So I think it's maybe time, I've been talking about this since two thousand and six, that the county stepped up to the plate and started at least having a discussion about it. My other question is for eight ninety-eight a month on nine oh eight, it says, cost per month by one-week collection without carts. So I only need my trash picked up once a month. I could probably go away with six weeks, I don't generate a lot of garbage, I eat just about everything I buy. So how does that work for rural customers? Can they now only get a pickup once a month?
No.
So, I mean, I see this, so, so what would the, I don't see any part of this in the contract. There's no fees of what it would cost per month for a rural customer? I mean, you're approving the contract tonight, so these fees include all the rural customers?
I think, I think, Mr. Looker, we approve, we approve the bid tonight, the contract comes back before us, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're not approving the contract tonight, we're awarding the bid.
Okay.
The contract would come, the contract with all the details that you're speaking of will come back before us.
But so far, this bid doesn't, only includes eight ninety-eight for one pickup a month for anybody?
One pickup a week is what they do.
Is that a week?
Yeah, eight ninety-eight is just a monthly fee per household.
Same schedule you have now.
Same schedule you have now.
Thank you very much, it just wasn't clear. Thank you.
And as far as recycling, I have had the conversation with people at Waste Pro about recycling, and the problem is China doesn't take the plastic anymore and it's almost cost prohibitive now to get in the recycling business, so it, it.
And, and the county does offer recycling spots where we pick it up ourselves. At Fairgrounds, I think, in the.
Mr. Looker, we have the, you and I have this conversation before.
Okay.
The state used to subsidize the county for recycling. Well, they cut out that recycling grant, went to going to, the county can bear it cheaper than we can recycle it. Although you say, well, the county's not doing what it need to protect the environment, they, they're bearing everything, but we could not afford to pass that heavy cost on the every homeowner in Columbia County to have a recycling program after we had to go it alone and the state stopped subsidizing it.
Kevin, do you recall right off the top of your head on, you know, on the landfill side of the budget, what the recycling, I mean, it's, it's quite extensive what we do spend on it, you know?
I do not recall the number, it, it is significant.
It kind of, kind of caught my attention.
Yes, it is significant.
Three years ago.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I would like, and I don't know whether I need to do it by motion or just a, a, a point of view to Kevin and David, that we make the, we sent out to all the vendors that does our roll-offs, those letters go out certified, and they mandatory to meet, to have to be at the meeting.
I think Kevin and David can just require that.
And any that does not come, they will not be able to do business in Columbia County. That's why I want the letters go out certified, so everybody, I hear the same message at the same time. Do I need to add one more motion, Mr. Chairman?
No, sir, I think the staff's already planning to take exactly that course of action.
Commissioner Williams, you're, you're spot on. We're going to do that.
Okay.
Okay? The next item is bid number twenty twenty one oh two, Hitched Trace Clay Hole Creek Bid Warning Contract to C A Boone. We received four bids. Kurt's Construction, one point three one eight, Florida Field and Grading, one point one two one, C A Boone, nine thirty-nine, six thirty-six, Anderson Columbia, one point one six six, three twenty-one. Mr. Chairman, I'm recommending a motion to approve bid and contract to C A Boone in the amount of nine thirty-nine, six thirty-six.
Commissioner Murphy, this is in your district.
I make the motion to approve bid number twenty twenty one dash oh two and.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. And I'd just like to add to that, myself, Chad and Kevin, staff, Kevin and Chad, put together a town hall for myself and the constituents in that area. We had a good town hall the other night, middle of rainstorm, had a pretty good show and I didn't think we was going to have, but went very, very well, had nothing but good, positive feedback off of it. I feel like the constituents are clear what's going on and like Kevin explained to them, you know, this is just step number one and been going on a long time, we're going to keep doing what we can do. But I, I just want to reach out and just tell staff, thank you, it went very well.
Always good to interact with the community.
Thank you, sir. The next item is for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, mosquito control tentative operational work plan budget. So a grant for the control of mosquitoes funded through the Florida Department of Agricultural and Consumer Services. The grant is anticipated to be thirty-three thousand, four hundred and three dollars. This is the same funding as current fiscal year. The tentative operational work plan budget is required by Florida Statute three eighty-eight. You have a personal services on the local side at thirty-one, two hundred, personal service benefits, six thousand, twenty-three dollars, operating expenses on the local side at forty thousand, four hundred thirty-seven, state side at thirty-three, four oh three, totaling seventy-seven, six sixty locally, and thirty-three, four oh three on the state side, in totality, one eleven, zero sixty-three. I'm requesting a motion to approve the operational work plan budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, for one eleven, oh six three.
Sub move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Final item for consideration is bid number twenty twenty one oh six, Northwest Indian Springs and Northwest Wildflower. We had three bids, Anderson Columbia, two eleven, seven twenty-eight, C A Boone, two fifteen, nine thirty-six, and John C. Hip, two hundred, seven ninety-five, thirty-two. Recommended motion, approve the bid and contract to John C. Hip in the amount of two hundred, seven ninety-five.
Mr. Chairman, this is in my, I, I move that we approve the bid and contract to John C. Hip in the amount of two hundred thousand, seven hundred ninety-five.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Kraus?
We've got to watch him, we've got to watch him trash truck guy.
Thank you very much, I'll be relatively brief. The first item on the agenda for me is the interlocal agreement with the town of Fort White. As you know, they accepted our proposal to provide the operation and maintenance of their water system, and they really want us to move as quickly as possible on this so that we can prepare a budget for the next fiscal year. We're hoping that this would take effect October one, and we would begin operating their water system October one. They have indicated there may be some additional comments in the draft contract that we had sent you, so what we're basically asking the board to do is to approve the agreement in principle, knowing that when we get the final version of it, we will bring it back to you.
This is my district, I'll make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement with town of Fort White.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We got a comment on this, Mr. Looker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question. I'd like to say I read through this whole thing, but I ran out of time, I didn't. But my understanding is that either in this agreement or the next one, the county is going to be paying Fort White twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the privilege of helping with them with their, with their water, is that right?
The agreement calls for a twenty-five thousand dollar a year payment for three years, so that we can lease their facilities, so we can sell water to their customers.
Okay, so my, so my question is this. I, I understand what he said, that seventy-five thousand dollars of Columbia County taxpayer dollars for three years to run a failing water system. I understand the argument, I've heard it here time and time again, everybody here pays taxes, that, well, if they go out of business, we're going to have to take it over anyway. People recall Mr. Commissioner Williams said that at the last meeting. That's the Florida statutes. Well, they might not go out of business, we don't know. If the county wants to take it over, that's fine. If the town of Fort White can't control their own finances and hasn't controlled their own finances over all these years, I mean, you can't even find records in Fort White for Christ's sake. I mean, you can't find anything. I mean, you can't find anything over there. My only question is, I'm not questioning, you want to run it, you run it. The city clearly dropped the ball on this one and had the opportunity to do what they do best and didn't do it. My only question is, you're going to spend all this money, $4 million plus to run a water line from Ellisville to Fort White? You're going to run their system? Why are you paying them with Columbia County taxpayer dollars for the privilege of doing that? And I just don't get that. I think it's wrong. And I'd like to find some kind of rational explanation why. If they need to finance, you need to finance their budget and run their town, then take it over and just run it. But I'd like to know why, what the rationale is, if it's $25,000 bucks a year. You could teach a lot of kids to read for that. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams, go ahead.
But Looker, there's a two-fold answer to that. The city of Fort White residents, they pay county taxes also. But secondly, we need, we need Fort White to go where the county is heading for our future in utilities. We are still, we are still have the concept of being in the utility business. And by having Fort White on our side, by doing what we have to do down in Fort White, I think $75,000 over a three-year period is money well spent to put Columbia County where we need to be in the future when it come to utilities. We have a part.
And they have also agreed to help provide labor for us if we need it, and equipment to work on the water system while we're down that way. So we're reimbursing them some for their labor and equipment, so.
And I keep hearing...
For their labor and equipment. They have agreed to provide some labor help for us while we're down there working on that system and some equipment if needed. So we're reimbursing them some for their labor and equipment also.
And I keep hearing that we're using Columbia County taxpayer dollars. They're tax dollars.
Yeah. They're all Columbia County tax.
I hope people understand, they're not separate from us. They are Columbia County.
But as Mr. Williams said, they're an integral part in the step going forth with whichever path we take in the utility aspect of it, so.
Okay. We got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you. The next one is an interlocal agreement with the city of Lake City. This is regards to the two CDBG Economic Development Block Grant applications for hangar or for fire suppression improvements at the hangar at Haco. It will benefit low-income families by creating additional jobs at Haco by allowing them to get into contract work that they currently can't do because their facilities don't meet current NFPA standards. Both grants have been applied for. This is something the DEO has asked us to have in place. The city has executed it and they're just waiting on our execution. And it basically says, we'll work together on these two grants.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the interlocal agreement between us and the city of Lake City for the CDBG grant for Lake City Gateway Airport Hangar 3 and 5.
Second.
Of course. Mr. Kraus, are these the grants where we have the interlocal agreement with the city for the county to administer these grants that they're successful with? Are we talking about the same grants?
This is the direction we're going in.
Sir?
Yeah, these are the Community Development Block Grants that we had the public hearing on about a month ago or a month and a half ago, where it's $1.5 million. There's two hangars involved and we are ultimately going to try and work towards an interlocal agreement on grants in general with the city.
Okay. So, and we will, did the city council approve the county administering these grants for them?
Yes, they approved this particular interlocal agreement.
Okay.
Any other comments? We got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Memorandum of Understanding with Jacksport. We've had one now for about five years. It's expiring, this is a renewal. Basically, we're going to work with Jacksport on economic development issues, try and get logistics that can both ship from Jacksport and locate here in Columbia County, using the rail spur that we were talking about earlier. And it's a five-year MOU. There's a typo in the version that you have that says three and then it's five-year, but it's actually five-year. We verified that and we're just asking to renew this memorandum of understanding with Jacksport.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. So service agreement with Merchant McIntyre Associates. This is basically like firms we use in Tallahassee, only in Washington, DC. They're requesting the ability to give us a trial run through October for $7,500 per month. And they will create a comprehensive grant strategy and an action plan and have us meet with the funding agencies and key congressional staff in DC so that we can try and apply for the federal funds for the larger projects. Say federal DOT funds, highway funds for County Route 6, water and sewer grants, possibly the NFMP. That's why we're, that's why they're coming in. They are our contact in DC. And we believe that with ARPA, we know there's other ARPA funds out there directly from the funding agencies. And we believe if the infrastructure grant is adopted by the federal government, there'll be a lot of infrastructure funding out there. And so this is an effort to see if a grand total of $22,500, if we can identify where these fundings are and make inroads and get these applications approved.
Move the take recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Got a motion and a second. David, you've talked to these companies, is your recommendation we do a trial run with these?
Yes.
Think it'd be beneficial to us?
We will know by October if they're useful and if they're not, we'll just terminate the agreement.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. The next item is appointments to the Board of Adjustments and the Planning and Zoning Board. We did receive three applications. We, Police Roberts advertised for them. One of the applicants, Brad Dix, is no longer eligible, so he withdrew his applications. There were two. Staff is recommending specifically Laura Nettles to the board. The reason we're recommending Laura Nettles is not only she a local realtor, but she has worked with both the city and, worked in both the city and county planning departments and she is very knowledgeable about our LDRs and the enforcement of our LDRs and how all of that kind of fits together and work as a former city and county planner.
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint Miss Nettles to the Board of Adjustment, Planning and Zoning.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more comment? All in favor?
Aye. And then my last item is an appointment to the Economic Development Advisory Board. Basically, they have two openings. We received only two applicants. One of them is Mr. Terry Dix, who's currently on the board of Dix Trucking, and he would like to be reappointed. The second applicant was Mr. Ron Jones from Career Source Florida. There is an issue with Mr. Jones in that he does not live in Columbia County. So the board has three options. They can reappoint Mr. Dix and not fill the second position, go out and readvertise the second position and look. They can appoint Mr. Dix and waive the residency requirement for Mr. Jones, or they can just readvertise for both positions. Our recommendation is to reappoint Mr. Dix and also to waive the residency requirement and appoint Mr. Jones to the Economic Development.
So move. But Mr. Jones is a property owner in Columbia County. And two, he feel the need of diversity on the, on the industrial development board because we do not have any minorities, minorities, whether it's females or blacks on that economic development board. And he'll do that where there's diversity on that board.
And you're recommending who, Mr. Williams? I couldn't hear what you're saying.
Recommend the motion.
So you're recommending Mr. Dix, is that what you said?
And waive the residency for Mr. Jones.
Okay. Waiver, okay.
I have no problem, I have no problem waiving residency if he is in fact a property owner.
Yeah.
I made a motion.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Robbie made the motion, Mr. Williams seconded it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
All right, public comments. Nobody got anything to say tonight? All right. Staff comments, anybody?
Mr. Chair, just one thing. I respect the board's decision to pull the item I put on the agenda tonight, but in the future, if anybody has any reason for any concern about anything I put on the agenda, please just give me a quick phone call. More often than not, I will pull it for you. The commissioners who've dealt with me a lot know that. Mr. Witt had an item on tonight that was under my name and I pulled it for him. So y'all all have my number. If you have any problem with anything on the agenda, please just, y'all know I'm compliant. Just give me a call.
Commissioner comments? Commissioner Williams?
Boy, we had a very good Economic Development Board meeting this week and we came up with a strategy that we need to have Tallahassee more involved in what we're doing here in Columbia County. Our biggest loss was Governor Scott when it came to economic development for Columbia County and the infrastructure to get it started. We are not getting that same involvement from our present governor that we have now. It could be that he's been tied up very much with the COVID and this and that, but we, I know for a fact, I'm going to say we, know for a fact that this last company that we lost was because we did not get the quality of leadership from Tallahassee. And they ended up in making Georgia. The governor making, put on a big spell about this and that and how they were leaning out there. And we didn't get that and we have not been getting it, but we came up with a strategy plan that we can get Tallahassee more involved and let them know what we need and how we need the leadership of the state to step up with some of these companies that are interested in the state of Florida, especially in North Florida. Glenn, you want to?
I'm all for the governor. Henry Williams.
Okay.
We're working on that through several different boards, FDC and NFDP. And...
We're coming over here.
Actually, the governor's office, Lena Young, they've got a new person that they're using as a liaison between the governor's office to actually go back and begin to work with Enterprise Florida and to start opening up these channels because it was a pretty difficult year this last year. So everyone across the board with all of the economic development organizations have recognized that we haven't had that same level. And I think it was a little bit disappointing. You mentioned about a project that we lost. It's kind of sad when you hear the governor of Georgia step up and make that announcement and talk about his involvement through that project and then it went there. And that project was a half a million dollars. So, I mean, I mean a half a billion dollars with 500 jobs and we just missed it. So I think going forward, everybody's on board. I think it took this to recognize this. And also, I think COVID actually separated everyone. In the past, economic development groups across the state of Florida have been meeting and engaged. And the fact that they could not get together and could not meet, everything was done at a distance, I think we lost a lot of that communication and contact, real personal communication and contact. So I think we're, I think we're going to be able to go forward and do a good job with...
And I think the only commission on this board can verify what I'm saying about Rick Scott is Tim, how committed he was to Florida and the things that he would just call you and say, here's what I want you to do, do this on an individual basis. And it always was, he's the reason we are as far as we are at the mega site.
That's right.
Well, we do have a contact now for a direct line to the governor with Alex. And I think we do need to get him more involved in what we got going on here in Columbia County. And I think that's a great idea, so, yeah.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Hollenworth? Anything? Mr. Witt? I would just like to say, Attorney, I wasn't trying to make a stab at anybody or say anything, but the last two meetings I've sat here and we have made an effort to be transparent and make sure everything that is on the agenda is advertised correctly and the public's had a chance to look at it. And like I said, this was not advertised, like I said, until Tuesday afternoon, which gave basically two days to review it. And I just felt like we needed more transparency in that. And I'm sure it wasn't done by, you know, on purpose or, you know, anything.
And please, I wasn't directly directing that to you and I know you don't. I mean, we've been working together all day and week. And so I don't want anybody taking, oh, Joel's mad at Rocky, Rocky's mad at Joel. That's not what it is. All I'm saying is, even if it's five minutes before the meeting, hey, man, I don't feel comfortable talking about that. You mind pulling it? Y'all know I'm going to pull it. So just let me do it because it gives the right impression. I got no interest in ramrod anything. So just in the future, or if, as soon as you know you're uncomfortable with it, let me know because then I'll stop preparing for it because I'll know it's getting put off a couple more weeks. So that's all I'm saying.
And that's fair. Absolutely.
David, have you done?
Yeah.
You got any updates on the HMBT and CGBT?
All of the property owners should have their letters of voluntary participation and their offer. The title company has been submitted to purchasing for final selection and we're moving forward. There was one that had an issue that they actually gained some acreage, so we may have to reappraise that one.
Anybody else?
Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.